Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice on all. Sunshine Notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, Public Meeting, Tuesday, April 20th, the time is now 7:10. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 3rd to Star Ledger and tap into Nutley. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Town Hall Bulletin Board and is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Due to multiple executive orders declared by Governor Murphy and to prevent further spread of COVID-19 pandemic, all public meetings for the year 2021 will be held remotely via Zoom or teleconference. The public will be able to listen to the Board of Commissioners' meeting and participate during the designated public comment portion of the meeting by utilizing access through a URL link or dial-in numbers provided by the township website. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Patraco.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Mayor Tucci.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I believe we do not have any minutes this evening, is that correct?
We do not, yes.
Okay. Any discussion of presentations at this point? Seeing none, I will turn the agenda over to Commissioner Scarpelli for a proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a proclamation tonight for John Ricchio, who retired from the Department of Public Works this past month after over forty-eight years of service to the Township of Nutley. I think that's one of the longest-running employees that we've ever had in the township. I've had the pleasure of knowing John for over fifty years. Both John and his brother Joe worked for my grandfather. In fact, my earliest recollection of John was where my office is now. My grandfather had a little convenience store and John would come down and he would work and stock the shelves and move the milk, the old inventory to the front and the new inventory to the back. It was glass bottles, Tuscan milk. People, it's the original recycling of bottles. People brought the bottles back and they handed them in and went back to the milk supplier to be refilled. So, is John on? Sal?
He is.
All right. So I'd like to read this with your permission, Mayor.
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Whereas John Ricchio began his career in the Township of Nutley on September 25th, 1972, working for the Department of Public Works. Whereas John held various positions throughout his career within the Department of Public Works, such as road maintenance worker, equipment operator, assistant sewer foreman, and supervising equipment operator. Whereas John had the distinct honor of serving under four different Department of Public Works Commissioners: John Lucy, Ernest Pyro, Peter Scarpelli, and current Commissioner, Dr. Joseph Scarpelli. Whereas John was a member of the Nutley Friends of Abuse and Special Children, helping to raise much-needed funds for children and families in need, Nutley County Committee, along with his wife, and active in Holy Family Church. And whereas John has earned the respect and admiration of all who knew him, and his dedication and commitment to the Township of Nutley has set standards which we should all strive to achieve. And whereas John has happily married to Debbie and together have two children, Mark and Kevin, a daughter named Jennifer, three grandchildren, Daniel, Rihanna, and Emily, and a brother, Joseph. And whereas on March 31st, 2021, John retired from the Department of Public Works after forty-eight years, six months, and six days of dedicated service to the township. Now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of Jersey, that John Ricchio's long-serving dedication and service in the Township of Nutley and its residents be hereby recognized. And be further resolved that the gratitude of this community be hereby extended to John Ricchio for his forty-eight years, six months, six days of service to the Township of Nutley, Department of Public Works. Congratulations, John. We miss you already, three weeks, and we hope you're enjoying your retirement. And everyone to come back on an hourly basis, just give me a call. John, you have, I don't know if you're still on, you want anything to say?
Okay. I'd like to make comments. John, whether you're listening now or not, I'd just like to congratulate you on forty-eight years of service to this township. Aside from being the ultimate gentleman, you were the epitome of what a public employee should be. I want to congratulate you on your retirement and wish you all the best. Now you'll have the time to do all the things that you enjoy, pretty much anytime you like. Commissioners, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. John, enjoy your retirement. After forty-eight years in public service, I'm pretty sure that whatever your state benefit is, it isn't enough to compensate you for your dedicated years of service. But in retirement, enjoy it, enjoy it with family, and I wish you much health, much happiness, and many blessings.
Commissioner Kelly.
John, forty-eight years of service to this community is an incredible achievement. To kind of put that in perspective, you've been serving the Township of Nutley more than I've been alive, so I want to wish you the best retirement ever, and hopefully it's just, the retirement is just as long as the amount of service you provide to this community. So, good luck.
Commissioner Patraco.
Thank you. I just want to let Commissioner Kelly know that used to be my line when I was the youngest member of the Board of Commissioners. But John, you've always been a gentleman and a great friend of everyone's. Just to echo the Mayor's comment, a true gentleman. I'd like to say there's still some of us left in the world, but if, like Joe said before, you started out moving bottles, milk bottles. Patraco's Deli is always available for somebody that knows how to do that work, and we are always looking for help, but walking around the side, we should best of health and happiness in retirement.
John, we wish you could be here to accept this proclamation, but we'll get you the proclamation, and I also have a little photo of you in front of the new rabo, and we'll get that to you also. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Commissioner. Reports, Commissioner Revis.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a report for the Code Enforcement Department for the month of March 2021.
Thank you. Commissioner Patraco?
Yes, I have my.
I have my public safety report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. We will move into bills.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill is for April 20th, 2021. Public Affairs, one hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-four cents. Public Safety, eighty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. Public Works, sixty-six thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. Parks and Public Property, five hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Water Utility, twenty-five thousand two hundred and seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Payroll as of Friday, April 2nd, 2021. Regular payroll total, seven hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents. Overtime payroll total, twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. COVID-19 overtime payroll total, six thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Total payroll, eight hundred seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-three, ninety-three cents. For a grand total of six million two hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Mayor, I understand John is back on.
John is back on, okay. We'll divert from the agenda. John, would you like to address us? Not yet. Okay, well, we'll continue on, and when John is able to get in, we'll speak. No problem, not a problem at all. All right. Before we get into public comment on agenda items only, I have a statement that I'd like to read on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. The Nutley Board of Commissioners condemn the alarming growth of discrimination aimed at Asian-Americans slash Pacific Islanders amidst the COVID-19 pandemic throughout our nation and within our township. News outlets, along with local sources, are reporting an alarming surge in anti-Asian racism. All legal efforts will be put forth to prevent the public targeting of Asian-Americans, which ranges from bias incidents to hate crimes to inappropriate lawn signs while remaining cognizant of our nation's constitutional right of free speech. Those that perpetuate hate crimes, racism, and violate anti-discrimination laws against Asian-Americans and any others will be answerable for their actions. We ask residents to take affirmative steps to acknowledge, condemn, and correct acts of prejudice and hate. Our goal is not to alienate, marginalize, or disregard any of our community members, regardless of race or ethnicity. Our goal is to protect and promote mutual respect and appreciation for all people and cultures within our community with no exceptions. Commissioners, any comments? I'll start with Commissioner Scarpelli.
Mayor, I appreciate your statement on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, and there is no room for hate in our community, and I don't want to have to be doing these anymore. I think that we should... I'm just tired of the hate. I'm tired of people being discriminated against because of the color of their skin, their gender, their ethnicity, and it's just something that I'm really tired of, and I don't want to see in our community. I don't want to see it anymore.
Couldn't agree more, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. I just like to echo on Commissioner Scarpelli's comments as well. You know, the older you get, you really do realize how hurtful words can be, even if they're not acts of violence, if they're just words. But words are very hurtful, no matter what you are or who you are. And I have to tell you, it's very upsetting to see what's going on in this country, you know? Hate takes a lot of energy. Being happy and being friendly and saying good morning and good afternoon and good night to everyone is much, much, much easier than hating. I've been around Nutley a long time, you know? I played basketball through high school. I have a lot of friends that don't look like me or my family, and they were always welcome into my mother's house, you know? Can't just judge somebody for what they look like, you know? Give everybody a chance, and you know, a lot of times you'll be pleasantly surprised of what the outcome is going to be, but again, it is... It's very difficult to sit up here and be part of a government, you know, why this stuff is happening in, you know, in this country. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Revis.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I think you summed it up best. You know, it's time to stop, right? And change the story to hearing about wonderful successes where people are getting together, they're doing things together, right? And they're doing it in a way that's for the betterment of themselves, their family, and for the community. Of community that fights itself loses. It loses every day, and we just can't tolerate that as a community. If someone says something that's helped them better understand that maybe what they're saying is hurtful, help them see that it can be, it can be different. And let's just all work, take that one step at a time, because it is hard work. You're talking about beliefs that have been embedded in society for many, many, many years and cultures, right? The simple fact is, you know, everyone deserves an equal chance to be successful and have a wonderful life, and no one should stand in front of them and deny that. We should all stand tall, united around the opportunity, especially in light of, you know, on a different topic, the George Floyd decision today. We should stand tall on the opportunity to create a better and a very differences.
Thank you, Mayor. While everyone has their civil liberties to say and what they say and do what they want under the First Amendment, it's important that we be mindful and that we never tolerate hate. We don't participate with hate. There's a very good legal opinion that our town attorney, I'm sure, is very familiar with. It described discrimination as a cancer on society, and we can't tolerate any cancer in this community. If someone's going to participate in some sort of hate speech, it's a reflection not only on that individual, but this entire community, and we need to be cognizant of that so that we raise our status as a community rather than bringing us down as a community. I think the statement pretty much sums up the sentiment of the Board of Commissioners, and it's a very strong and powerful statement, and I stand by it.
Thank you, Commissioners. All right, we will now open the meeting up to public comment on agenda items only.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed at the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. No one at this time, Mayor.
Mayor, I didn't see a spot for announcements. I have an announcement I'd like to make. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind all of the residents of the town that on Monday, April 26th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., that we will be having the town's annual Free Rabies Clinic. It's going to be held right outside the Chestnut Street Firehouse. It's important to keep in mind that we're still in a pandemics, pandemic, so masks and social distancing will be strictly enforced, but bring your cat, your dog, and we'll get them vaccinated and licensed with the Clerk's Office. That's again, Monday, April 26th, 2021, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., right outside the Chestnut Street Firehouse. Thank you.
Yes, and John, just to add on to that, I mentioned it last week, but as a reminder, the Clerk's Office will be there, and you can renew your pet license using credit card this year. So it's been something that's been asked for. We were able to get it done.
And there is, in fact, a discount for senior citizens, correct?
There is.
I think I finally abolished for that. Commissioner, any announcements?
Yeah, we had a successful shredding day last week. Almost twenty thousand pounds of material were safely shredded and disposed of. We have a electronics recycling on Saturday, and we're going to have a spring farmer's market, just one day, which will be on Sunday in Parking Lot 9 next to Cecicolini, so everybody come on out. We have almost twenty vendors.
Commissioner Patraco?
I'd just like to give a little update about the ambulance squad, what's going on, all that. I just want to say that the transition into the fire department and blending our PDMs or all our volunteers, which I can't thank enough, has been going very, very smoothly. And that's the good work of Mrs. Corella sitting there, Amel Pugliese, our Chief Paul Goffe. I can never forget our great town attorney, Alan Genatempo. And again, Alan, I can't thank you enough because there were some trying issues that you got through for us, so great job to Alan. But I really want to thank all, like the worker bees, because those are the people that are on the trucks, you know, and responding to the calls, and it really has been a team effort, you know? There was, it's no surprise there was some bumps in the road last summer, and just to see it running like a well-oiled machine and everybody on the same page is really, really exciting. And, you know, I just like, want to thank everyone for stepping up and doing a great job for the township. So I'm just here to report that our response time remains very, very low, and we're fully staffed, and you know, most of the time we're running two ambulances, and you know, it's been a couple of weeks, I would say, since we're, you know, really together. The fire department's training with the ambulance, and vice versa. So kudos to everybody involved. I mean, they really have, everyone has stepped up, and I want to thank all of you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, and please, don't be modest. We know you've put a lot of time and a lot of effort into taking that fish and pulling it back together and making it one team once again. So for that, I thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, that means a lot to me.
Okay, we will now move into ordinance introductions. Commissioner Patraco?
Yes, I have ordinance number 3472, an ordinance to amend and ordinance codified in the Code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 17A. This is a weight limit, which we're eliminating, and that's due to the Center Street Bridge that we did. There was always a weight limit because of the old bridge there, so we're just moving this forward as it is. I move that this ordinance be passed to second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that the further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on May 27th? Or May 18th?
May 18th.
On May 18th. Can I move it?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli, I see you have an ordinance on second reading?
Yes, Mayor, this is a stormwater ordinance. It's pretty comprehensive ordinance to comply with the DEP's mandate coming down from the state, and we have a public hearing on it tonight. We close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye. Move the ordinance? Sorry.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have quite a few resolutions on for this evening. I'm going to take them a little out of order, just because some of them are presented on behalf of the Board, so I want to do the ones presented on behalf of the Board first, and then go into the rest of the resolutions. This one is Resolution Number 9721 regarding melanoma and skin cancer, and this is on behalf of the Board. Whereas skin cancer is the most common cancer in the United States, whereas current estimates are that one in five Americans will develop skin cancer by age seventy, and whereas it is estimated that approximately nine thousand five hundred people in the U.S. are diagnosed with skin cancer every day, and more than two people die from skin cancer in the U.S. every hour. Whereas it's estimated that two hundred and seven thousand three hundred and ninety new cases of melanoma, one hundred six thousand one hundred and ten non-invasive in situ, and one hundred and one thousand two hundred and eighty invasive will be diagnosed in the U.S. in 2021. Whereas before age fifty, melanoma incidence rates are higher in women than in men, but by age sixty-five, rates are twice as high as in men. Whereas having five or more sunburns doubles your risk for melanoma, and research has shown that daily sunscreen use cuts the incidence of melanoma, the deadliest form of skin cancer in half. Whereas the American Academy of Dermatology encourages everyone to perform regular skin self-exams to check for signs of skin cancer. About half of melanomas are self-detected. When detected early, the five-year survival rate for melanoma is ninety-nine percent. Whereas melanoma is most commonly associated with skin cancer, the cells called melanocytes, which produce a dark-colored pigment called melanin, are found in other places in our body as well. Our hair, the lining of our internal organs, and our eyes. When it forms in the eye, it is known as ocular melanoma, or more specifically, uveal melanoma, because it forms in the uveal tract of the eye. Whereas ocular melanoma is extremely rare form of cancer that affects the eye, with an incidence of five per million adults. Although rare, it is the most common primary cancer of the eye in adults. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of... Encourage all residents to take necessary precautions and to prevent or end or decrease the risk of melanoma and other skin cancers, and seek out free skin cancer screening where available. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
The second one on behalf of the Board goes hand in hand with a statement that Mayor Tucci read earlier this evening. May is Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and so we're going to honor that month here in May 2021. This is Resolution Number 10421, where as approximately sixteen point six million, a million Asian-American and Pacific Islanders reside in the U.S., making up approximately five point four percent of the U.S. population, and that by 2050, Asian-American and Pacific population, over forty million people. Whereas Asian-American and Pacific Islanders represent over thirty countries and ethnic groups that speak over one hundred different languages, and whereas the month of May has been selected to commemorate the arrival of the first known Japanese immigrant to the U.S. on May 7th, 1843, as well as to honor the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10th, 1869, which upwards of twenty thousand Chinese workers helped to construct. The month pays tribute to generations of Asian and Pacific Islanders who have enriched the United States' history and are instrumental in its future success. Whereas the origin of Asian-American and Pacific Islander, AAPI Heritage Month, can be traced back to the 95th Congress, 1977 to 78, when five joint resolutions were introduced proposing that a week in May be designated to commemorate the accomplishments of Asian-American and Pacific Islanders. Whereas on March 28th, 1979, President Carter issued Proclamation 4650, the first presidential proclamation for Asian-Pacific American Heritage Week. In this proclamation, President Carter spoke of the significant role Asian and Pacific Americans have played in the creation of a dynamic and pluralistic American society with their contributions to sciences, arts, industry, government, and commerce. Whereas on May 7th, 1990, President George H.W. Bush issued Presidential Proclamation 6130, designated May as the first Asian-Pacific American Heritage Month. Whereas AAPI Heritage Month, formerly Asian-Pacific American Heritage Month until 2009, originated in 1992, when New York Congressman Frank Horton introduced the bill that called for the month of May to receive that designation, which came from the idea of former Capitol Hill staffer, Jeannie Jew, in the mid-1970s, more than fifteen years earlier. Whereas an alarming nearly thirty-eight hundred anti-Asian racist incidents, mostly against women, were reported over the past year. As a result, it's even more important now that we celebrate and recognize the positive role in which Asian and Pacific Americans contribute to our society and condemn violence and racism. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey. Recognize May as Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Stop AAPI hate, solidarity, community, and celebration, and encourage all residents to come together as a community in solidarity against racism and to celebrate the richness of the Asian-American Pacific Islander communities. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And this is the last one on behalf of the Board, 10521, to designate the township as a stigma-free zone. Whereas the National Institute of Mental Health reports that one in four adults experience mental illness in a given year, and one in seventeen adults live with a serious mental illness such as schizophrenia, major depression, or bipolar disorder. Approximately twenty percent of youth ages thirteen to eighteen, and thirteen percent of youth ages eight to fifteen... of youth ages eight to fifteen, experience severe mental disorders in a given year. Whereas the stigma associated with the disease of mental illness is identified as the primary reason individuals fail to seek the help they need to recover from the disease. Whereas stigma-free zones aim to inspire public interest and open dialogues about stigma, raise awareness of the disease of mental illness, and create a culture wherein residents who have the disease of mental illness feel supported by their community and neighbors and feel free to speak, excuse me, feel free to seek treatment for the disease without barriers and encourage residents of all ages to be mindful of their mental health and ask for help when needed. Whereas establishing stigma-free zones will raise awareness of resources, encourage residents to engage in care as soon as the need is identified so recovery can begin, hope is inspired, and tragedies are avoided. Whereas roughly one in five veterans experience mental health problems, while approximately twenty percent of the military and seek mental health treatment. One of the most common diagnoses among veterans is depression. In fact, depression is usually diagnosed along with another mental illness such as post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD. Deployment can also increase the risk of unhealthy alcohol and drug use, substance use, and suicidal behavior. Whereas recent findings have indicated that spouses of deployed service members are also prone to mental health issues, including suicide. Whereas the Nutley Health Department has partnered with the Nutley Family Service Bureau to provide resources, education, treatment, and support for individuals and the community as a whole to combat the stigma of mental health. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, designate the Township of Nutley as a stigma-free zone, and encourage community members to acknowledge and support family, friends, and neighbors who may be suffering from a mental health disease. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
This, this next one kind of goes hand in hand with the last resolution I just read as May is a mental health month, so twenty-one, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas one in five adults in the United States live with a mental health condition. Whereas forty-six percent of Americans will meet the criteria for a diagnosable mental health condition sometime in their life, and half of those will develop conditions by the age of fourteen. Whereas ninety percent of those who die by suicide have an underlying mental illness. Suicide is the tenth leading cause of death in the United States, but suicide is preventable. Whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental illnesses can recover and lead full, productive lives. Whereas each business, school, government, agency, healthcare provider, organization, citizen share the burden of mental illness and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention through two thousand and twenty-one, providing practical tools that everyone can use to improve their mental health and increase their resiliency regardless of their personal situation. Whereas the COVID-nineteen pandemic has had profound impacts on mental health of people of all ages, and now more than ever, it is critical to reduce the stigma around mental health struggles that commonly prevents individuals from seeking help. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey to hereby proclaim May as Mental Health Month and call upon citizens, citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools, and the Township of Nutley to recommit our community to increasing awareness, understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate accessible services for all people with mental health illnesses at all stages. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
May is also Food Allergy Awareness Week. Just want to get this out there as well. Whereas food allergies are life-threatening illnesses that affect as many as eighty-five more than three hundred thousand ambulatory care visits a year involving children under eighteen. Reactions typically occur when an individual unknowingly eats food containing an ingredient to which they are allergic. Whereas more than one hundred and seventy foods have been reported to cause allergic reactions, which include eight major food allergens. Milk, egg, peanut, tree nuts, wheat, soy, fish, and crustacean shellfish are responsible for most of the serious food allergy reactions in the United States. There is no cure for food allergy, and scientists do not understand why. Strict avoidance of the offering food is the only way to prevent an allergic reaction. Whereas anaphylaxis is a serious allergic reaction that is rapid in onset and may cause death. Whereas food allergy research and education, FAIR, is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to ensuring the safety and inclusion of individuals with food allergies while relentlessly seeking a cure. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey recognize May ninth to the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Food Allergy Awareness Week in the Township of Nutley. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And this last one that I have is particularly important since we're still in the midst of a pandemic. It's Resolution Ninety-eight, twenty-one, to designate May as National Nurses Month. Whereas registered nurses in the United States comprise our nation's largest healthcare profession, whereas the depth and breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings. Whereas the American Nurses Association, ANA, has, as the voice for the registered nurses of this country, is working to chart a new course for a healthy nation that relies on increasing delivery of primary and preventative healthcare. Whereas professional nursing has been demonstrated to be indispensable component in the safety and quality of care of hospitalized patients. Whereas more qualified registered nurses will be needed in the future to meet increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community. Whereas the cost-effective, safe, and quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be an ever more important component of U.S. healthcare delivery system in the future. Whereas the demand for registered nursing services will be greater than ever because of the aging of the American population, the continuing expansion of life-sustaining technology, and the explosive growth of home healthcare services. Whereas the global COVID-nineteen pandemic has shown the important role nurses play, proving them to be compassionate, innovative, and resilient in the face of the biggest public health crisis this century. Whereas National Nurses Week begins each year on May sixth and ends on May twelfth on Florence Nightingale's birthday. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, along with the American Nurses Association, recognize the month of May as National Nurses Month, extending the two thousand and twenty theme of the year of the nurse into two thousand and twenty-one. This recognition builds on the increased visibility of nurses' contributions from two thousand and twenty, the ANA's expansion of the National Nurses Week to Nurses Month in May. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas NJSA forty-eight, colon, four dash five, as amended by PL two seventeen, C one eighty-three, requires the governing body of each municipality and county to certify that their local units' hiring practices comply with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's enforcement guidance on the consideration of arrest and conviction records in employment decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, as amended by forty-two USC two thousand, head ask, dated April twelfth, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, before submitting its approved annual budget to the Division of Local Governmental Services in the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Whereas the members of the governing body familiarize themselves with the contents of the above referenced enforcement guidance and with their local units' hiring practices as they pertain to the consideration of an individual's criminal history, as evidenced by the group's affidavit form of the governing body attached here, too. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, we hereby states that it has complied with NJSA forty-eight, colon, four dash five, as amended by PL two seventeen, C one eighty-three, by certifying that the local units' hiring practices comply with the above referenced enforcement guidance, and hereby directs the clerk to cause to be maintained and available for inspection a certified copy of this resolution and to show evidence of said compliance. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments to tax charges in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-five cents per block sixty-five oh three, lot nineteen, for the year two thousand and twenty-one. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patrako.
Whereas unbelted motorists and passengers account for thirty-nine percent of New Jersey motor vehicles fatalities in two thousand and eighteen, and whereas the most recent statewide survey undertaken in June two thousand and nineteen determined that seatbelt usage rate in New Jersey to be ninety point two-three percent. Whereas use of the seatbelt remains the most effective way to avoid death or serious injury in a motor vehicle crash, whereas in two thousand and eighteen, New Jersey experienced nearly thirty-five hundred crashes where an occupant was not wearing his or her seatbelt fatalities. And whereas the state of New Jersey will participate in national nationwide click-it or ticket seatbelt mobilization from May twenty-fourth to June sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, in an effort to raise awareness and increase seatbelt usage through a combination of high visibility enforcement and public education. And whereas a further increase in seatbelt usage in New Jersey will save lives on our roadways. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim and announce May twenty-fourth through June sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, as the click-it or ticket mobilization in Nutley, New Jersey, and urge all citizens to always wear seatbelts when driving or riding on its roadways. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey, that Township Treasurer is Treasurer B, and she is hereby authorized to refund fifty dollars to the below listed for a refund payment for a municipal parking plan. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
So I have there. Thank you. Whereas the Township of Nutley Ordinance Number six sixty-five dash twenty-two, Preservation of Trees, states that tree removal permits must be obtained for a cost of fifty dollars per tree. And whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property authorizes a refund for each tree permit submitted upon the planting of a new tree on said property, replacement trees, size, and species must be approved in advance by the Township Foresters. And whereas funds will be available from Account C, there's zero one, nine zero four, there's nine zero five. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer is authorized to refund the tree permit fee collected as per the shade tree preservation ordinance to Yvette Perez, five twelve Center Street, for one tree in the amount of fifty dollars. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley entered into a contract with Veridian Environmental Consultants Upper Montclair, New Jersey, for the site investigation of Father Glotzback Field. And whereas the Director of Parks and Public Property has recommended the following change order from said contract. Change Order Number Three for Site Investigation Services in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. Funds are available from Capital Ordinance Thirty-four, zero, eight, C, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that Change Order Number Three in the amount of fourteen thousand four thirty-five B and is hereby approved. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey, that Treasurer B, and she is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below. Four twelve Manchester Drive for our track program in the amount of sixty dollars. Two ten Rutgers Place Yoga for Life in the amount of fifty dollars. Five seventy-four Coventry Drive for our track program again in the amount of sixty dollars, and three forty-six Bloomfield Avenue for a basketball clinic in the amount of seventy-five dollars. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Whereas the Township, whereas the Nutley Township Public Library intends to submit an application for a grant in the second round of funding under the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act to install a new HVAC system, including ductwork modifications. And whereas the application documents will include schematic design plans and cost estimates reviewed and recommended by the Library Board of Trustees. And whereas the grant application requires a fifty percent match of an estimated project cost of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley supports the grant application for the above stated project, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey, that if the Nutley Public Library's grant application is approved and the grant awarded, the Township of Nutley will provide the funds for the fifty percent match within the time period required. Be further resolved at the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the mayor or his designee is authorized to execute such documents consistent with this resolution and to take such other action on behalf of the township in furtherance of this resolution. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Includes our business for this evening, we will now open the meeting up to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Rory Moore, four sixty-two Chestnut Street, can you hear me, Mayor Tucci? You're a little low, that's okay. Last, last meeting, Mr. Evans gave some budget concerns. And we also hired, I believe, under resolutions, we had Mr. Seffeli for land use, I believe, Ingleseno for other law work for some other proposed projects. And we also, you also issued a survey to the planning board. Do you think, considering our history with the Chickolini Building, do you think that's money well spent to have all these surveys and we don't even know what the owners of the land are actually doing with it?
Mr. Moore, you're speaking about the Chickolini property?
Well, the Chickolini, that's as an example. We, we had that for three, four years now, and we still don't know what to do with it. It was like three point five million dollars. And we're spending a lot of money, considering Amazon wanted to put a facility on King's Klingon Avenue. Why are we spending all this money for surveys and law services? And we do not, this is all private land. We do not know what the owners want to do with that just yet. Aren't we spending money ahead of time?
Well, Mr. Moore, as I'm sure you're aware, preparation is always necessary when you're undergoing any project. As far as Mr. Sefeli's contract for land use consultation, that's something that's been ongoing for years. He's an expert in the field, and actually, it saves us in the long run because his guidance, all right, prevents us from making mistakes that we might otherwise make if we didn't have him. As far as surveys for the Chickolini property and other properties, as I'm sure you're aware, these are properties that need to be developed, and the ratables need to come back into the township. They need to be placed back on the rent, on the tax rolls. So yes, I do believe that this is money well spent. And in the end, I'm sure that you, along with everyone else who's listening in, will agree with that. And sometimes things take longer than we originally anticipate, but as the old saying goes, it's better to be safe than to be sorry.
I understand that. I'm not disagreeing with your, with your comments. What I am slightly concerned about is if we're going to these budgetary concerns that Mr. Evans spoke of last meeting, why are we spending all this money right now? I mean, Chickolines, we had it for about three, four years, and we still don't know what to do with it, and we still have no clear vision what to do with it. So you, to plan for it is one thing, but to keep it around in our pocket for a while, it doesn't seem, it's your, your, your comments and your actions seem to be a little skewed, if you don't mind my saying so.
Well, Mr. Moore, I respect your opinion, and there are always other issues that need to be addressed before you move forward. Commissioner Evans, would you like to add anything?
Mayor, may I?
Please.
You know, Mr. Moore, you raised a point that I think is important for not only you to hear, but for many people. And wherever, whatever your circles are where you're talking about this, please share it, because I think it's important. We acquired the Chickolini property, so it's not private property, it's municipal property because of the desire of the property owner to build apartments on that site, a lot of them, that would have eliminated municipal parking in that area. So we had to step in for a reason. The expectation of the board at the time would be that we would move on this property much quicker than what we have been able to do, simply because the property itself would have been subject to our settlement, and legal in, what's the word, our legal case for objecting to what was given to the township as our COA responsibility. We were awarded by some analysis that there was a requirement that we would have had to put in somewhere in town, five hundred and fifty affordable housing units, which would have included the Chickolini property. Because we didn't move on it, we stayed quiet about it, and actually, for a lot of people's frustration, you know, it stayed dormant until that litigation was settled, and that was settled quite favorably for the township, for only fifty-five units that have to be put onto the Hopford Road site. So the delay of the board was very deliberate. It wasn't haphazard. It wasn't that we didn't have a purpose or a plan to move forward, but in order to protect the town, we actually stayed silent and actually had a very favorable outcome with, related to COA litigation. So now, it, we didn't spend any money in the past on this site. We are now beginning to do, to follow through on a process and a commitment that we made, which would be to redevelop this site and do something that actually is supportive for the town without a requirement for affordable housing. So it was very important that we pause and take the time that we did. I hope that helps.
In the future, don't you think that would have been nice to share with the taxpayers?
Oh, absolutely. And actually, if you go back on the record, it's been actually repeated for the taxpayers multiple times, including yourself.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I add just one comment to that?
Sure, Commissioner.
Rory, I have to say one thing about Angelo Sefeli. If I was ever on Mars or Jupiter or wherever I went, when it comes to land use, he is spectacular. He's one of the most respected attorneys around. I think he's worth his weight in gold. Back when I was the mayor, he did a lot of work for us, and I have to tell you, because of Andy, Nutley's way ahead of the game, I would say.
Oh, I'm not questioning his credibility. It's, I'm not questioning whatsoever. It was just that we're spending a lot of money.
Right. I might, I might not be, I might not be right on this, Mayor, but aren't those, all those funds that we put out for professionals, aren't they returned to us at the end of the project or during the project?
Yes, anything related to redevelopment is in fact reimbursable.
So truthfully, there's not a cost to the town at all.
I'd like to, I'd like to see those reimbursements.
Mr. Moore, there's a, there's a, thank you, Commissioner. Board is adverse to affordable housing, but there is a correct number of affordable units that we should build in town and that we could build, and sometimes what our opinion is and what the Council on Affordable Housing's opinion is are not in sync. So we'll just leave it at that, okay?
We will.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
There's no one else, Mayor?
No one else? I believe we have a need for an executive session this evening?
Yes, Mayor. Contract negotiation.
Contract negotiations. Move it.
Second.
Whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances recently exist. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley to move into closed executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be it further resolved that at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public, shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters, with any exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.